...recess in our tour with the Oregon Village Board of the new high school renovations. All the board members who were here before we went on recess are still here, so thank you. We're on item B, our consent calendar. Is there any item on the consent calendar that any board member wishes to remove? Jeff?
I don't need to remove it, but I'll be abstaining from the minutes from July.
Okay, and per our usual practice, you can still vote in favor and we'll just note on the minutes that you've abstained from that portion. Anything else? Anybody have anything to remove? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar. Mr. Raymond with the motion, Mr. LeBrun with the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none because there are contracts in there and we have new staffing assignments and contract changes in the pink on your table. Janie, would you call the roll?
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. LeBrun?
Yes.
Ms. Feeny?
Yes.
Ms. Oderico?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Zak?
Yes, motion carries 6-0 for those items on the consent calendar. Moving to item C on our agenda, it's communication from the public. The board policy 180, oh, for establish an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. Janie, has anybody registered this evening?
No.
Okay, is there any member of the public who wishes to address the board this evening? Any member of the public? Third time? Seeing none, we'll move on, and it's informational items, an OEA report, and I understand we have one. Coming up, if you want to sit right next to Barb because we've got a mic there, welcome. We're a little cozier now in our new space, so fan-friendly. I'm gonna... Sorry.
Awesome. I have a statement on behalf of the OEA from Tracy Lidera, President. The OEA would like to publicly thank the Board of Education and Gina Jonen for agreeing to a compromise concerning the prep time inequities at RCI for this school year. We've been working with administration for the last few years regarding the eroding of prep time at RCI. I would like to continue to work with the district to provide time for teachers to do the work the district asks of them. The role of a teacher has changed significantly over the last 10 years. No longer do teachers work in their isolated classrooms teaching static lessons to their room of students. As instructional leaders, we are asked, tasked with tailoring lessons to all our diverse learners as well as working with the school to achieve schoolwide goals. We are encouraged to work with our colleagues to develop cross-curricular lessons that enhance student learning. We work with our administration to identify gaps in our students' learning, develop plans to address these gaps, and then work to achieve our collective goals. Analyzing data, conferring with students, team meetings, and educator effectiveness deadlines are all things that teachers are expected to complete during their workday. All of this makes prep time an integral part of a well-running school system and a vital component of student achievement. Reductions of prep time will lead to inferior educational outcomes for our students. We are eager to work with the district and the hired consultant to do what is best for students, maintaining teacher prep time for student learning.
Thank you very much-
Thank you.
-for that input, and we'll be having that item as part of our action item from Policy Committee, and as I understand it, it contains that compromise. Yep, okay, good. Student report, we're still in the summer, and so we don't have our student rep seated yet, and look forward to that, and Jim, yeah, if you-
Next meeting.
Okay, great. We'll communicate with that so I can meet with our new rep before the meeting so that they get the lay of the land. Good, thank you. That takes us to E, action items, additional open enrollment spaces for 2017-18, and Brian, that's yours.
Board members, what you have in front of you is the report that we have been using to track open enrollment throughout the year. You will notice our request is for one additional seat in a second grade classroom, and it's based on a student. If you approve this, this second grader has a sibling in the district already, and we can't authorize this additional seat without approval, without your approval. So our recommendation is just for one additional seat in second grade.
Does any board member have any questions of Brian regarding this request? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the administrative recommendation to add one open enrollment space for second grade for the next school year.
Awesome.
Ms. Feeny with a motion to approve the administrative recommendation, and Mr. Raymond with the second. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Janie, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Feeny?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oderico?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. LeBrun?
Yes.
Mr. Zak?
Yes, that motion carries 6-0, and we will have an additional open enrollment space for 2017, 2018, and second grade. From Policy Committee, action item E2, we got three items, and Krista's chair, the floor is yours.
The first item is the 2017-18 employee handbook, so I'm going to turn that over to Gina so she can walk everyone through the modifications.
Okay, so my plan is just to walk through the corrections, and I can take questions as I go. If you just want to go ahead and interrupt me, does that work for everyone? All right, so first change we have is on page eight, just adding the Path Forward board paper, and I should say, just ignore the table of contents. Once I, once you approve a handbook, we'll fix all of that. Okay, so we'll add the board paper. So I'm moving along. On page 10, we propose just adding language to mirrors state law. By state law, every school employee must have a physical and a TB test, and so I would just like to clarify that those are completed within the first 30 days, or we are not able to continue their employment. So I just want to make that clear to every employee before they start.
So that paragraph is new?
That paragraph is new, the law is not. It's fairly old. All right, so I'll just keep going. On page 19, you will see a change that we're proposing throughout, and I should back up and say that I'm very appreciative. We met with the OEA to discuss these changes before we brought them to Policy Committee, and they were very supportive of all the changes except for two, and I'll highlight those today, but we have since reached a compromise on those two changes. So my understanding, and I'll look to Sarah to correct me, is that the OEA is supportive of the changes that impact teachers. Okay, so in terms on page 19, this is one of those changes that the OEA was supportive of, is there were several dates throughout of April 1st of teachers letting us know if they were returning to us, and so what we're proposing is to make those dates a little earlier and know by March 1st if people are coming back. And because, I would say, the reason for that change is that the market is getting increasingly competitive, so if teachers know they're not coming back to their position, we would like to know that as early as March 1st so we can start filling those positions. So that change starts on page 19. On page 21 is the language that Sarah was referring to. Thank you, Sarah. We are working on prep time at RCI. We know that this is an issue. The change came about to memorialize what's happening at RCI because one of the RCI teachers had pointed out to me that the prep time language did not match what was happening at RCI. So it used to say two prep periods during an eight-period day. RCI actually has a 10-period day, and so we wanted the language to actually reflect what was happening at RCI. We know that RCI has had some scheduling challenges. They actually have a scheduling consultant in this week that is working with the leadership team to design a new schedule, but obviously that wouldn't be impactful until at least the 18-19 school year, because given the consultant's calendar, we just couldn't meet before now. And so what we wanted to do was to memorialize what's actually happening at RCI. So at RCI, they do have two prep periods for their 10-period day, except for one quarter, where some teachers do not have two periods, and so the least amount of prep time that those teachers would have when that happens is they'd have 280 minutes per week. So we at least wanted to have the language reflect what RCI is actually doing. Okay, does that make sense to everyone? I know I went through that kind of quickly. Okay. On page 26, this is a change to food service. What we're proposing is when you are an employee with your ID, you can set up a food service account, and you can put money in there, and then you can purchase food through our food service for breakfast or lunch. And what our normal practice has been is if you leave the district, if you retire or you resign, then we refund that money that's in your account, and then if you owe us a balance, then we ask teachers to pay us back for that balance. And so we were spending a lot of administrative time cutting very small checks or trying to deposit those in direct deposits and found that like accounts were closed or we had other issues with that. And so what we would like to propose is if there's a remaining balance of more than $10, that we would refund it, but if there's less than $10, that we would ask that the employee donate that to help with families in need for their unpaid meal balances, and the OEA was very supportive of that. We wanted it in the handbook to let everyone know so that teachers know by the end of the year if they're retiring or they're going to leave us that they spend that money, if that's not what they want to happen with that. And then also, if they owe us money, a lot of teachers just prefer that we just take it out of their last checks, and so just to have that policy in writing. I will keep going. On page 35, another date change of April 1 to March 1. We have a number of teachers that take a year of child rearing leave, so if they know they're not going to return to us, then we ask that they tell us by March 1. On page 39, we just wanted to clarify, this is our current practice, but we had a little bit of confusion this year with one of our non-teachers, that if you are going to accept donations from the sick leave bank, that you have to exhaust all of your other paid On page 44, this is something that we had a lot of conversation about in terms of interview pay. It's been our current practice that if teachers are on interview committees outside of the contract day, that we pay $18 per hour, and how that works is the district budget funds two positions on an interview team, and then the building budget would fund any additional positions. And so what HR was proposing is that, and we had a lot of discussions about this when we did the teacher compensation schedule, that with the move to a more professional wage, that some of these other duties that we pay a little bit here and a little bit there, that that would just become part of regular job duties, and we would use that money to fund the teacher compensation system. And so what we were proposing is that interview committees would be truly voluntary, but there would be no pay associated with those. And that was a recommendation that our committee had sent to the board, and talking about it with the OEA, the OEA position was that they would like teachers to continue to be paid for that through the summer, and then we could start that new policy September 1st. And so we appreciate the OEA working with that, us on that, and so I have revised the language since the policy meeting to be in line with the OEA's proposal, that we would pay people for this past summer, but then starting September 1, that interview committees would be voluntary if it was outside contract time, and there would be no penalty if teachers did not want to participate, but we expect that we would have teachers that do want to be part of that process even if it's volunteer time. Any questions about that? On page 45, you'll see a lot of changes, but it's just to reflect our current practice that in terms of, we have different, we have pay for different things that teachers do. So if teacher isn't engaging in curriculum work, or a teacher as learner, we call it, that that is based on our $40,000 and our $44,000 rate. We call that the BA and the MA base, and so that's something that's currently in effect, so we just wanted to update our language. Page 48, also something that just was sort of an unwritten practice that we had, that we wanted to memorialize, that we do reimburse for approved graduate credits, up to 210 per credit that are not part of a master's degree, and what we wanted to propose is that it would be a maximum of three credits per semester and six credits in the summer, because we still want teachers to have a work-life balance. And I would say 99% of our teachers, that's what they're doing now. On page 53, we just wanted to update the staff handbook to match our student handbook, that we would not allow the use of tobacco products or electronic cigarettes or related devices while on school property or engaged in school activities. We haven't had a problem with this at all, but just wanted to mirror what the student policy is. On page 55, this was a new proposal that the OEA was supportive of, is for teachers who are retiring, right now, the deadline to tell us is April 1, but again, to try to help with recruitment efforts, that if a teacher would give us a written notice of retirement by March 1, we would provide a $200 incentive for doing so. So no one would be compelled to tell us by March 1, but there would be a little bit of a financial incentive to do that so we could get those positions posted and filled. And if you ask me how we came up with the $200, if you turn the page on page 56, our liquidated damages are $200, so we thought that would be a good match, but I would ask the board that we change those dates. By state law, teachers have to return their contracts by June 15, and so we're asking that there would be a penalty to break that contract from June 16 through July 31. Under the old handbook, it was July 1, and it just seemed to feel inequitable because if a teacher turned in their contract and resigned June 30, there's no penalty, but if they resign July 1, then it's a $200 penalty. So we'd like to just expand that window to match the state law deadlines. Let me just double-check. And the final change is Appendix A on page 65. We wanted to add a safe harbor policy to protect the district against liability for wage in our claims. So it's something that we do, just to let employees know, and we talk about this every year with employees at orientation, so it's not a change, but we have 650 employees that we regularly do payroll for, and so we're just asking employees to partner with us and check their paychecks and make sure that their pay is right, their deductions are accurate, and if they're hourly employees, that if they're working, that they record their time. We have wonderful employees for the school district, and often our hourly people want to come in and say, "Well, I just came in early, but I didn't log in. I want to donate my time." Well, federal law doesn't allow us to do that, and we can be liable for that, and so we just want to make it extra clear for everyone how that works. So we'd like to add that to increase employees' awareness of the law and then also protect the district from liability. Those are the changes that we are proposing. Any questions? Oh, sorry.
Okay, and I understand that Policy Committee approved the changes, but we've got a couple slight differences from what you guys approved, and so technically, what you, if you make a motion, then we'll have it seconded as opposed to our normal procedure where you'd make the motion straight out of policy, so.
I'll move that we... I move that we approve the changes to the 2017-18 employee handbook.
I'll need a second to that.
I'll second that.
Mr. LeBrun. Barb, could you turn off the mic down by you, because we can only have like two on. There we go. So Krista with the motion, and Mr. LeBrun with the second to approve the changes that have been articulated by Gina and are set forth in the materials before us. Because it's a policy change, or is there any discussion on those? Because it's a policy change, Janie, would you call the roll?
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. LeBrun?
Yes.
Ms. Feeny?
Yes.
Ms. Oderico?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
And Mr. Zak?
Yes, so those changes are approved in our handbook by 6-0 vote. Thank you, Gina. Go ahead and update our table of contents now. Great. Second item from Policy Committee is 436, student policy on alcohol and/or other drugs, and Krista, the floor is yours.
Okay, as you recall from last year, the board approved a modification to this policy for the 2016-17 school year, which was at the use of random searches by police canines on units on school grounds and in school parking lots. We had a pretty robust discussion at the Policy Committee meeting for about an hour and a half. We heard from Brian, we heard from Shannon, and we heard from Jim in terms of their view on the canine searches that we had this year, and we also heard from Chief Yule in terms of the police department's perspective. We also had Amy Miller there who presented some data, student data, on usage by our high school students and middle school students, and also about their emotional health. After that discussion, the Policy Committee recommended that we continue this pilot for one more year, for the 2017-18 school year, so that we can have some additional data to tell us whether this is an effective tool for our students.
And that is a motion on behalf of the Policy Committee to extend the trial period of the random drug searches at the middle school and high school for the 17-18 school year.
That is correct, but I will also let you know that the administrative recommendation was to, was to make a policy change where random, or reasonable suspicion would change to random, but we came forward with our motion, as Steve directed.
Okay, so a motion on the table is to continue the trial period for a year. Is there any questions before we get into talking about substance? Any questions or informational items that anyone has of Krista or the administration? Courtney?
Krista, I just have a question about that data that you referred to. I know we talked about it in the policy meeting, that we wanted more data, but who will sort of articulate what that data will be and who will be responsible for gathering it and helping us understand it?
I think that's the next step. If the board agrees that we actually want to get more data, we have to determine what that data actually is, and so I would see that that would come back to policy, to have that discussion and determine with staff what that actually means.
Mr. Raymond?
I wasn't present at the policy meeting last week. My question is, were principals and the superintendent still in favor of this policy as they were last year?
I was getting blinded by the sun, so I could say it that way, too. I'd have to sing it that way, so that...
Our administrative position is the same as it was last year. We, we feel it's important for us to continue to use this as, as a deterrent and to make the schools as safe as we can possibly make them. So that's why Krista mentioned, we were looking to change the word that the Policy Committee asked us, and that, and that's our recommendation, and that's where it remains today.
Any other questions? I'd note on page two of the purple that there's discussion about a survey of the staff, but I don't have what the questions were that were asked of the staff. Can somebody provide those to me at some point?
I just, I don't know what we asked them and how we asked them, and I think that's important.
Absol- wow. Absolutely, it was very minimal. It was regarding our canine searches in the fall and the spring. How supportive of, are you of the use of canine searches? And then I also asked, how disruptive did they feel that the searches were? So the responses were highly supportive, somewhat supportive, somewhat opposed, highly opposed, and then the same kind of on the disruption scale, highly disruptive, all the way to minimally disruptive. So that was, that was, but I can share with you what we asked staff, absolutely.
I literally took, for consistency purposes, the same language that Jim used, but I only asked the first question. I didn't ask about disruption.
And I also asked if you, you know, to explain, you know, if they wanted to add any more details as to why they were supportive, or, and so we had a lot of anecdotal answers as well.
Any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion on the table, now's the time for discussion. Any board member, Courtney, any discussion, anything you want to say?
No, I attended the policy meeting, and as Krista mentioned, the discussion was robust, and I think board members asked a lot of questions, and they were appropriately answered, and I was struck largely by the data around those two surveys that both Jim and Shannon shared, and it seems that parents and, or actually, parents weren't asked, were they asked? Jim, were parents asked? No, not parents. We had anecdotal from parents, and then the survey was asked of staff and students, and they were largely supportive. So given that, even though I personally don't feel it's an effective policy, that's not what I would be voting on. I would be voting on the administrative recommendation and the data that, that was given to support that, so I'll be voting in favor of it.
Jeff?
My position really hasn't changed since last year. It's pretty similar to what Courtney just stated. I'm, I'm not convinced that it's an effective deterrent, but I'm on the fence to a large extent, and given that situation, I'm going to rely on the administrator's opinions.
Barb?
I have a lot of concerns about this policy, but I'm willing to try it for one more year. I do have one concern, and that is, as I understand it, when the cars- All right, I do have one concern, is that when the dogs are sniffing cars in the parking lot, as I understand it, cars that belong to members of the public or people who are working at the schools but are not cars brought to school by students are included in the sniff and potentially can be searched. And I would like to have a practice that cars of the public that do not belong to student, students or employees are not searched. I don't think it's appropriate that we be searching those cars of members of the public or people who are working on the premises. It has nothing to do with our objective, and I don't think it's appropriate.
First of all, as a parent of kids who were very recently in the Oregon schools, I was absolutely in favor of this policy. After our conversation and after our year's pilot, it became clear to me that I don't think we're well enough defined to make a policy change right now. And so during our conversation in the Policy Committee, I, I voted for another year of a pilot so that we could gather some more data. I think we have a very small sample size, having had two searches, and I think that it will help us better define the words that we use and the boundaries we use, both physical boundaries as well as liberty boundaries. Before, and before we put a policy in place, I want to make sure that we feel comfortable that we've well-defined that.
Krista? Okay. Well, you guys know where I stand on this. I've been opposed to this absent any, I, I think the cost is significant or more significant than other people balance it. I'm not opposed to it. If, if there is a benefit from it, I would prefer that the board vote up or down on whether we make a permanent change. We've been batting this around for several years now, and I don't know that another year of a pilot is going to get us any further down in the informational pike in terms of where we stand on the issue than right now. I, I, so I, I'm going to vote no, because I think we, I don't want to do another year of trial. I want to, I want to make a decision on the merits long-term. I want to, I want to make a decision on the merits long term, because then I have a fairly lengthy decision-making matrix and how I, I'm going to view this at such point in time if I'm on the Board and we have the decision as to whether to make this a permanent change. And my thinking is, what are we trying to accomplish by this? Has the current policy been ineffective in accomplishing that goal? Can we articulate how and why? Right now, we have reasonable suspicion, and the information that I had was that we've never tried to utilize canine searches under a reasonable suspicion standard, so I don't know why that's not effective. What's caused the change from thinking to go from reasonable suspicion to a random search? Is it going to be effective if we go to random search? Will it be effective? And, you know, a couple of numbers that I saw that struck me is the Dane County Use Survey. We were told last year that, I think we're the only district that doesn't do random searches or didn't do random searches in 2015. And if you look at the urban suburban schools combined and Oregon schools under the use surveys, the question is, I've seen other students using drugs or alcohol at school. And those schools that have random searches at that time in 2015, 43% of the students saw that happening, notwithstanding the random searches. Oregon that didn't have random searches had 42% response rate, which is less. It's not statistically significant, but it's less. I'm not finished. So if you ask other school districts, do they have drug or alcohol problems at their schools on random searches? Would that have random searches? I think they'd say yes. So I question the efficacy in creating a drug-free school district. And if we look at just the results from this year on the two random searches, we had one positive hit, but we had a significant number of false positive hits. And those are not only false positive hits. For one locker, that's my understanding, after reviewing the data, this is the first time I learned about it, was that we were going to also then search lockers on either side. So, you know, a false positive has a triple effect on it, and that's significant to me. Will the new policy be consistent with the district's approach? I'm going to ask that question. And I think if we look at the path forward and what we value in education and the building communities that we're trying to create, to me, and I talk about this in greater length when we debate this on the merits long term, I think it flies in the face of exactly what we're trying to do in our papers and the type of climate we're trying to control or create. Is it going to be consistent with other potential approaches that get to the same goal, that is a drug-free school? Well, if we go this route under that guise, then we're going to have to answer some other questions. And there are questions that I asked when we were debating this last year, is do we do drug testing of athletes under co-curricular? Because we can do that. If we're really serious about creating a drug-free environment, and we have the constitutional and legal right to drug test over 50% of our students, why don't we do that? We know that we create opportunity, very real opportunity for students to engage in drug and alcohol activity at the noon time, when they leave campus on open campus. And we've seen expulsion data that reflects that a significant amount of activity occurs during that time. So if we're really concerned about creating a drug-free school, are we then going to consider closing campus at lunchtime to get to that goal? That will lead us into a variety of discussions about costs and benefits of each one of those. But if we open that door under this rationale of doing random drug searches, I think it behooves us on critical thinking board to ask those other questions as well. One piece of data that we don't have, and maybe it is a benefit of extending this another year, is we've got a whole host of Dane County school districts that do this. Have we surveyed them to see what their data is in terms of when they do a random search, how many hits do they get? And how many false positives? And what do they feel is the value? Okay? Is it solely one where it helps individual students, or is it more of an attempt to modify behavior through the imposition of this procedure? So that's the matrix I'll walk through if we get this on a permanent basis, but we're not there. I want to get to that discussion, but the motion from the committee is, the committee wanted to hear or see another year of experience under it, and so that's the motion. So anybody have any further comments before we vote on the motion? I'll go through here. Courtney?
Steve, I just wanted to say that I appreciate all your comments, and a lot of what you just articulated was discussed at the policy meeting. As Krista said, it was about an hour and a half discussion, so many of the points that you brought up were talked about. And I think the consensus of the group was that, yes, a lot of those data points are very important in the overarching decision-making of the Board in terms of how do we create a drug-free environment, and how do we do what's best for our students and our schools while balancing personal liberties? So I don't want you to think that that wasn't part of the discussion. It definitely was, and I think it will be continuing. And I think that's why the Policy Committee wanted to extend the pilot for a year, so that we can really begin to articulate some of those data points, so we can really make an informed decision. Would you concur, Krista?
Yeah, and I think a lot of what you talked about can serve as the basis, and as the Chair of the Board, you can determine if this comes to policy, if it's a task force, or if it's the full Board discussion, that a lot of those things can serve as the basis for what are we trying, what questions are we trying to answer in the next year?
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Jeff?
Just a couple of comments. Regarding open campus, I agree with you, Steve, that that is a potential problem. And given that the commons is going to be increasing in size, I know this issue is not before us tonight, but I would probably be in favor of closing campus, at least for freshmen and sophomore. But that's probably not something that would be addressed until next school year. And I would also want to echo Barb's concerns about vehicles that are not on school property being searched. That also concerns me, and I don't know if this is the place to be trying to modify the policy before us, but I'm also uneasy about that aspect.
Go ahead.
We did have a pretty good discussion about cars that are not on school property, and that has nothing to do with the school district policy. The Village of Oregon Police Chief has the right to search any vehicle, and he, you know, why don't you speak to that, Brian, in terms of your, that has nothing to do with this policy or the Oregon School District. You are doing that as the Village of Oregon Police Chief.
Got it? Statutorily, legally, as long as the police are allowed to be in the location they are, i.e. if they're in the schools, they're there with permission for canine searches. As long as they're on a public right of way, we can be there legally, and therefore there is no expectation from the public that dogs cannot go around and sniff their vehicles. As long as we're there legally, we're well within our rights to do so off school property.
Any other? Barb?
I just want to clarify that my concern is cars that are parked in our parking lots that belong to members of the public or people who come here from the outside to do work on the school grounds. I don't think those cars should be searched under any circumstance. And then the only other comment I want to make is that the data shows that we have an alcohol problem that's almost twice as large as our marijuana problem. And I would like to see at some point, some, I know that the district has been working real hard on that issue, but the dog sniffs don't deal with alcohol. And at some point, I think it'd be great to have a community-wide discussion about what we do about that, and that students are getting alcohol from family and friends, and there are a lot of unlocked beer refrigerators around this community, and I'm sure some of that beer comes from there.
Anybody else? And I would have liked to, then at the Policy Committee meeting, I was there for a little bit, but I had other commitments that night, so I didn't get the opportunity to engage in that discussion, because I would have talked more about what I perceived the cost. And something that troubles me is there's not a reflection in the materials that I've gotten about the cost factor, even though it's intangible, and even though we may weigh it individually as Board members differently. I'd like to have more of a talk and recognition of that as we go forward. Anything else? Tim?
Just for clarification, when we talk about cost, and thank you for adding that, that it's more intangible, because the cost, the, hey, is the school district writing a check to the Police Department to have these searches done? That cost isn't there. It's the other cost, and I absolutely can appreciate that. It is intangible cost, not actual financial cost.
I think we're at the time to vote. So the motion is to extend the trial period for use of random drug dogs at the middle school and high school in terms to be worked out by the administration, as we had done last year, for the 17-18 school district. Krista, is that right?
With the added caveat that we would determine measurables or a discussion in terms of effectiveness.
Okay. Janie, call the roll, please.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. LeBrun?
Yes.
Ms. Feeny?
Yes.
Ms. Oderico?
Yes.
Mr. Zock?
Oh, that motion carries 5-1. And so, Krista, I'd ask you as the Chair of Policy Committee then to work on developing the type of data that we're going to be looking for the next year when we decide this. Okay, moving to item 2C, 731 school lunch program. Krista?
Okay, these, what we were looking at was not a change to 731, the policy, it was really Gina presented the administrative guidelines, which really don't need an action by the Board, but just wanted to point out a few things, so I will turn it over to Gina to explain those.
All right. As Krista said, we participate in the National School Lunch Program, and as such, and we are required this year to send a letter to our families explaining how we will handle unpaid meal balances. So I brought this to the Policy Committee to give them information about it and to get their thinking on how we should memorialize our policy on collecting unpaid meal balances. And so I wanted to bring it to your attention as well, because given that we're going to be sending a letter out to parents and guardians, I thought you may all get questions about that. And so if you do, please feel free to direct them to Robin, or Andy, or myself. So we're hoping to educate our families in terms of how we handle unpaid meal balances. So this isn't really a change from what we're doing. It's an administrative guideline, so I'm not looking for approval tonight, but just providing information in terms of, it's our policy that if there is a child in lunch at the food line, that child is able to purchase that meal. So generally, the lunch accounts work the same way as staff accounts do, that parents and guardians can put money in the lunch account. If families are free or reduced lunch, then that price for that meal changes. All of our families, whether they're free or reduced, we do charge for à la carte items. And I'll look to Andy, since this is really in his basket, to correct me if I misstated anything tonight. So in terms of when they come through the line, if the person at the register sees that there's a negative balance, they're still able to purchase that food and move on, because our intent is not to embarrass anyone or take food away from any of our students. We realize that it's something that's going on in the household, that our students have very little control over. And so what our goal is, is to do an even better job of reaching out to our families who are free or reduced lunch eligible, to make sure that they understand the income guidelines and know the process. And some of that paperwork can feel really complicated. We're very fortunate to have a social worker on staff to help us, as well as, this year we'll have two part-time new social workers through the Bridges Program that Joe Priesty came to talk to you all about. So we're hoping to work with them as well, to try to do even home visits, if that's what we need to do, to increase our families' awareness of the free and reduced lunch option. So that if we, if we do have, so I should back up, we also are excited, we have a new feature on Infinite Campus, which also has an app now, if you have a smartphone, that we will be notifying families when their balance hits $10 to add money to their account, but families can actually go in and select a different level. So if you want, you know, a $20 or a $30 notification, there's a variety of options. So try to educate families on how to do that, so they're notified more regularly of when to put money in the account. And then, once it gets to negative, then they'll also receive a notification that the amount is past due, and to make payment, and to contact us if they want to talk about that. If there still is a negative balance, then we reach out with a phone call, and if there continues to be a negative balance, then we ask for a face-to-face meeting. And really what our goal is, is just to see if circumstances has changed, if they need an additional help, if they need to set up a payment plan. So our goal is really our goal is to work with our families, you know, to help with those unpaid meal balances. We're very thankful to the Friends of the Oregon School District for their work and trying to assist us with that as well. And so really, our goal is just to keep talking and working with our families to develop a way to pay off those balances if they're not free or reduced lunch eligible. Any questions on that?
Krista, anything? Okay, thanks, and that's just an informational update, then that doesn't need Board approval. Good, thank you. All right, that takes us out of action items and F, discussion items, Committee Reports Policy. Anything else tonight, Krista? Okay, under FB, Vision Steering. Jeff?
We are meeting this coming Wednesday, the 16th, at 7:30 a.m. at the District Office. Correct, Janie?
Yes.
We'll be discussing, we will continue the discussion of potential transportation changes for the 18-19 school year. No changes this year. And next Wednesday, the 23rd, we'll have a special VSC meeting to get an update from Doctors Bustler and Ricaba on the Apollo Project.
Thank you. And then that meeting, we have a regular meeting this Wednesday, right? Pardon? This Saturday, this Wednesday, we have a regular meeting?
Correct, at 7:30, and next Wednesday, on the 23rd, that meeting's at 5:30.
I didn't have that on my calendar this Wednesday. Thanks for mentioning that. I would have been out with Sammy in the park, and you would have texted me. Okay, good. Informational items, G1, steamout update, and Brian, who's giving us that?
I am going to ask Leslie to share some information.
Is that one better than this one, as far as?
Andy will just replay what you say as we're going through it.
I just want to hold it far enough out, so I'm not booming the way some other people have been booming. But we just wanted to give you a very brief update of a very productive meeting that we had with Kevin Miras, who's the new Executive Director of the Madison College STEM Center. So this is definitely an important part of our, you know, support of our five values with the family and community partnerships and the engaging and relevant learning experiences. So Steve's So, Steve Zock and I met with Kevin, because Kevin's new position is that where he's trying to survey all of the 40 districts that Madison College serves, to try to understand where we are currently at with what he is referring to as STEM, and we refer to as STEAM, and potential points of partnership with the two organizations, the school district and Madison College. So, we gave him a tour, starting at the middle school, of our STEAM facilities there, and a bit of an understanding of where we're at, and then where our next moves are at the middle level. And then, we came over here, and we were able to get into a few areas we maybe shouldn't have been into, but it provided a really great tour, and we were able to see the outline of the new STEAM center, and also make the point that our existing facilities were high quality, especially when you compare them to the existing facilities of other districts. And then, now, we have this really incredible new STEAM center that will be yet another layer of support, as students learn to work in an interdisciplinary fashion in a way that supports thinking that is that of an engineer. So, he was very impressed with the facilities that we had, not only at the middle school, but at the high school, and he wanted to be able to answer all the questions that we had about possible partnerships with Madison College, even though he was really just in the beginning stages of his investigation as to the lay of the land in the area. He wasn't ready to make commitments to things. It was more about brainstorming potential points of partnership that hadn't existed up until this point. So, we spoke about the fact that we have a lot of interest in different areas that Madison College already has a program in. However, no school district in the area can afford to become the destination district for every one of these. And are there ways that we could all work together to provide points of specialty, so that students throughout the county had different school districts that they knew that they could apply to, or be a part of, or if they wanted to be a part of that particular specialty? We also spoke about the fact that we know we have a computer science concern, that there aren't people out there currently with the license, and that our students need this experience, and how could Madison College potentially partner with us to give more students that experience? We do have a plan for next year. We are offering the course for next year, but we want to make this a more robust system of offerings, not just one or two courses, and how can we work with them? Mind you, no answers to these questions. These are just questions that were posed. And we also spoke about how we could partner with Madison College on professional development related to STEM or STEAM, because all of the area school districts have the same need regarding supporting teachers in the quest to be interdisciplinary in a strategic and thoughtful way, and how could we all work together toward that end with Madison College as the hinge point? And finally, Kevin spoke a little bit about the Scholars of Promise Program at Madison College, and the planned supports that they have there for students who are a part of this program. And perhaps at a future date, we could describe it better, because I certainly don't have the background to be able to give you a lot on that right now. Anything you'd like to add to that, Mr. Zock?
No, I know Kevin from another area of my life, and was at a social event with him, and he mentioned he had just been appointed to this new position, and was going to go look at high schools and other districts. So, I said, well, why don't you come out and visit us? And so, we were able to find the time with Leslie to come out, and it was really enlightening. And as Leslie said, Kevin's really just on the ground floor right now, but it provided a nice starting off point for us to continue our conversations with Madison College and his program. Thanks, Leslie. Anybody have any questions? All right, moving on to G2, Back to School update.
I think I might merge a few Back to School updates along with the Superintendent Report. So, I'll start with August 17th, and August 22nd is our annual district registration. Board members, you are always welcome to come for 10 minutes, 15 minutes, an hour. We will find something special for you to work on, or if you have a special area you'd like to work on, just let Janie know, and Janie will have a conversation with Katie Heights. She's our captain for the day, and she will give you a great assignment. One of the fun things about district registration, it gives us an opportunity to connect again with parents, and to see kids and their excitement as we get ready for the next school year. Also, next week is our new teacher orientation, and we have a packed schedule, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Board members, you are all invited for lunch to Christie's Landing. And Leslie, is the start time 11:30 for lunch? Okay. If you can make it from 11:45 to noon, you are welcome to join us. Steve and I are going to be doing a short presentation from, well, I think it's short, 8:15 to 9:30. That's short in my world. You would be welcome to join us there as well. That's going to be right here in the Innovation Center. And typically, the Board President and I visit with new staff, talk about district initiatives. Obviously, we're going to have a conversation about the five values, along with the mission and our board paper, and everyone will walk away with plenty of material as they learn the Oregon School District. Then, Back to School with our entire staff is August 30th and August 31st. You might recall, for years, we would get together on three days. Now, we're doing it in two days. August 30th, all staff will report to their individual buildings, and it will be a building-based in-service day. August 31st, which is Thursday, all board members are invited to join us. It's been a couple of years since we've pulled together the entire staff, and we are going to do it again this year. And we're going to meet in the new gymnasium at 8 o'clock, from 8 o'clock to right around 10 o'clock. You're welcome to stop for breakfast at 7:15 to 7:45. And I recall back to the years when we pulled everyone together. It is an energizing group of 700-plus individuals, and I think there's some great value for us to see how large the Oregon School District is, and how many pieces of the puzzle there are to our entire system. So, we're excited for that day. Don't need to preregister for the district registration, the new teacher orientation lunch, or the August 31st. You just, if you stop by, we will make room and make a place for you, and you will not have to grab a microphone and say anything to the 700 staff members. Then, the real excitement will start on Tuesday, September 5th. There's just nothing like the beginning of a new school year. I've had the opportunity to talk to a number of parents and young people in our neighborhood, and I would say, they are ready to go to school tomorrow. Now, not everyone, I understand, there's a few kids, maybe some of our high schoolers that like the little break in the action, but our younger kids are ready to go back to school, and I hope I can see a day when we're back in school in August. So, there's a little teaser for everyone. And then, lastly, thanks to Steve Zock for his idea of getting together with the Village of Oregon. It had been a while, and I couldn't remember exactly what it was, and as soon as Steve mentioned, it was the conversation about J.C. Park East. And to look back in the rearview mirror now, and to see how far J.C. Park East has come all from a conversation that started as a joint meeting with the village, is pretty astounding. Again, thanks to Mike Grace as well, and to his staff and the entire village board. I've always felt like we've had a strong partnership, and we've worked together, and that's for the greater Oregon community. We all benefit, we all gain from that. So, we're excited with school year coming up. It seems like it's just a couple of days away on the calendar, and while we have a little fine tuning, you noticed in tonight's contract changes, when Gina handed this to me earlier, she said, "See why you feel tired?" From time to time, we've all been doing, excuse me, we've all been doing a lot of interviewing, and so far, we have made it through with really strong interview pools, although I will say the pools have been smaller than they have been in the past. But I think our community's approval of the teacher compensation referendum has been a critical piece to our continued success. And if you're really into breakfast tomorrow morning, breakfast is on me at headquarters at 6:45. Gina Jonah and I are going to be making a presentation, and Gina is not always an early-morning person, and she said, "Absolutely, Brian, I would love to speak with you at Rotary about the teacher compensation plan." So, we're going to give a little update to the Oregon Rotary Club on, you know, what it's meant, what it's been like as we transition to, and as we transition through and begin year two of our teacher compensation plan. So, headquarters has a great breakfast. You are more than welcome, even if it's a last minute, you want to show up. I think our program will start maybe 7:10. If you'd like to sing a song, though, you need to be there at 6:45. That concludes my report, unless there's a question.
That's both Back to School and the Superintendent's report?
Yes, I merged them all together.
Where's registration? We're not doing it in the Commons, obviously, but...
No, we are actually moving into this area of the building. We do have a band room available to us, so we'll be using the band, the old main gym. We'll be using the south side of the high school, so we'll be using the area next to the gym, be using the old main gym, we'll be using kind of the hallways in between. We'll have childcare in the art gallery, so kind of all in this area. It's going to be an interesting little trial and error type of thing.
All right, that takes us to closing H, Future Agenda, and Brian and I were talking this morning, and I said, "What do we have on for the 28th?" And he goes, "Not much." And it was too late to put on the agenda cancellation of the August 28th meeting, but we could really carry over any item that we had till the first meeting in September. So, unless we hear a lot of wailing and gnashing about not meeting on the 28th, we're not going to have a meeting on the 28th. Okay? All right, I don't see wailing and gnashing. A lot of happy people. I did see a woo-hoo, a smiley. Or a couple of them. Okay, that takes us to checkout, and I'll start with Courtney. Anything?
The only thing I would like to share is that on Thursday night of last week, I had the pleasure of attending a performance of Sondheim on Sondheim by the Oregon Straw Hat Players, and it was a fabulous production. It was neat, because it was a smaller venue this year. They weren't in the PAC, which is part of the construction zone in the high school. It was a wonderful performance, and I wanted to congratulate all involved, including our Board President, who was the producer. So, well done, Mr. Zock.
Thank you, Tim, or is it Tim, Jeff? Barb? Tim? Krista?
I just have one thing. I sometimes give an update, but I don't know if people saw The Observer this week. Scott did a really nice follow-up article in the Friends of Oregon School District, and so, I just wanted to publicly say thanks to the community. The community businesses and individuals donated $30,000 to our organization this year to help feed our kids. So, we did three programs, which was Healthy Snacks, and we delivered 22,000 of those to the schools, a Food Pack program, which is getting kids food when they're not in school. So, we did 960 of those, as well as 130 Bill's gift cards for the high school. And then, we also did the donation through Campus Portal to help with the meal-lunch balances when Orchard's money ran out, and we raised $6,000 there. And then, we also did 1,900 breakfast bags for summer school this year, and that's really all of the people in this community saying, you know, "We want our kids to learn, and we're going to help them do that." So, this year, we'll be continuing those three programs and adding a fourth, which is experiential equity. So, working with staff, we're going to be asking questions and listening again about what are those experiences that our kids should have that will help them expand their horizons, so they have opportunities that are available to other students. So, just a big thank you to this community.
Well, and thank you to you, Chris, for just a tremendous effort on that, and also congratulations. Krista, seems like she's been moving a little stiffly today. It's because she finished half Ironman, and that's just amazing. So, we have to all encourage her to think bigger, and look at the, you know, you double the fun. Not at all. And then, I saw Courtney yesterday at headquarters, and she's training for her 100-mile bike ride, so we've all been busy with stuff. And in terms of thank yous, I forgot at the consent calendar to mention the donations that we approved as part of the consent calendar, so I want to get that on the record before we go off the air. The Splash Pad, we continue to get donations for that, and Crystal Weber had a $400 donation, Holly Peace $200, and Peterson Pest Management for $200. The Class of 2017 donated $1,500 for the fireplace, and we had a larger, I think, still anonymous donation for the fireplace? Yeah, that will be announced at a later time to, when that gets completed. That's going to be really cool in there. And then, the Swim Club donated $500 to the pool, so we thank them for their generous donations, for the ongoing efforts of the school district community. And thanks for mentioning the show, because it was, I was too busy to do it, and I'm really glad I did it, because you get the payoff at the end, and I do a lot of sports stuff and that, and it's just the arts thing. What those kids did was just phenomenal, and they worked hard. They worked six nights a week for six weeks to put that on, and so, it was fun. And thanks to the district again. We got displaced, and they reached out to us and let us use Prairie View all summer, so that was, that was really good. We've done a production for 35 straight years in the summer, and we were at risk of losing that, so we got it done. I don't have anything more, unless you do.
Maybe one last public service announcement. I hope you've had an opportunity to go to drive by or to walk by. It happens to be on my biking route in the morning, and to see the daily growth of the Oregon food pantry. It is really an important project for our community, and I know there's literally thousands of people that have contributed to that, and the value that that's going to bring to our community is amazing. So, each day, it looks like they've put, they've made another addition to it, and it is really starting to take shape. So, if you haven't seen it, please stop by Peoples United Methodist Church, and you will see it as it's being built, and it is going to help our families and our community greatly once it's all set.
Great. And we have one more motion. I told my wife I'd be home at 8:30, so dinner's probably not ready tonight, so we can talk for 45 minutes, or we can have a motion to adjourn. Sir, second? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post, we are adjourned, and we'll see you, if not at a committee meeting, at our first meeting in September, or when school, I'll be in session.